Welcome, everyone, to the Monday, July 14th, meeting of the Barrington Select Board. At this time, could I have a roll call attendance?
Samaco present.
Mantra, aye.
Cappy, aye.
Scotia.
Hardikoff here as well. Please, those of you that choose to, stand and join me in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. At this time, we have agenda review and approval.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the July 14th, 2025 agenda as amended.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Samaco, aye.
Mantra, aye.
Cappy, aye.
Scotia.
Hardikoff, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to open public comment. Public comment can be someone online or in-house. It is limited to three minutes and a total of 15 minutes. If you'd like to speak online, please mouse over your screen, raise your hand. Anyone in-house that would like to speak. Seeing as I do not see a hand raised and I do not see anyone in-house, I will close public comment and move on to our public hearings. At this time, we have invited guests for our police swearing-in ceremony. Chief?
The town administrator reports for the greater community. I would not steal your thunder in that way. But because you gave me the opportunity, I will, I will say, and this is something that's very important to me, the profession of law enforcement is a challenging career, just in general. And so, one of the things that has always impressed me, not only about the officers that we have, but when we bring officers in and have swearing-in ceremonies like this is the support from their families. These are wives and girlfriends and parents and uncles and grandparents and siblings. And that is so essential for somebody to have a career, a successful career in law enforcement, where there's long nights and unknowns and a lot that, a lot of strain on individuals and their families. And so, when, in my role, when I see incoming officers come to our town to work here and see the support network that they have, that is very inspiring to me. And I know that these are people that will have successful careers in law enforcement because of the support of their family. So, thank you all for being here. And now, I'd like to turn it over to our chief, Joy.
You can stand wherever for right now. So, this is unusual for us in Barrington. We've only ever done this one other time before where we've hired two individuals at one time. Previously, we hired Tim Seawards, Donnie Morse. Neither of those are with us anymore. That's not a bad thing. Currently, Tim Seawards went on to become a sergeant in Farmington. Donnie Morse went to become a canine handler in the town of Wells. So, you've got big shoes to fill as far as those guys are concerned and going to the academy together. I think it's a neat experience because where most of us come on alone and we go through the academy alone, you guys are going to have each other to go through with. So, I'm going to start with Josh because he's closest to me. Josh came to us through a recommendation, through an individual that we train with annually, which to me is very highly respectful because we respect that man very much. So, for him to think enough to send Josh to us is great. Josh was honorably discharged from the Army. He did four years. He deployed to Syria. Beyond that, he's a competitive shooter, does jiu-jitsu. He's going to tailor in with us very well in the police department. Nick, a little bit different route in life. Nick was a woodland firefighter, which beyond what we do, I think is super cool because I would never want to do it. That's one of those things that I would never face down, and he did it for two fire seasons. Nick came, rode along with Officer Jamison Young. Officer Young thought very highly of him, thought highly enough that we actually hunted Nick throughout the process. We called him, he didn't call us. The fact that Donnie's position has been vacant now for a year and we're filling two at once out of the same hiring process is amazing to me. These two guys are going to be fantastic. They're both great individuals. Their families are here. There's clearly strength there. Comes from a law enforcement family, so he's got that behind him as well. So, I couldn't be happier than to bring the two of them on at one time. So, that being said, if you gentlemen would raise your right hand for me. I state your name.
I, Joshua Julius.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance.
I will bear faith and true allegiance.
To the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the constitutions thereof.
Will support the constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Joshua Julius.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm that I will.
And affirm that I will.
Faithfully and impartially discharge.
Faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties incumbent.
And perform all the duties incumbent.
Upon me as a police officer.
Upon me as a police officer.
Of the town of Barrington, New Hampshire.
The town of Barrington, New Hampshire.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of this constitution.
Of this constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I would now ask Nick's dad and Josh's wife. We don't have them in uniforms yet, so the badge pinning is just going to be on the suit for the time being. Yeah, you feel free to stab if you. Good with hazing around.
She's killed me.
So, the select board has a boring meeting ahead. Don't feel like you have to stick around at all. By all, by all means, we'll give you a minute. I mean. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Yep. Nice to meet you.
Welcome, all. Lucky town. Very lucky town.
Good to meet you all.
Up next will be our elected leader series. We'd like to welcome Heath Howard to the front of the room and give you a few minutes. You can sit if you'd prefer. Okay. And, and you'll make sure that your little green is lit up by pressing that button and we'll be able to hear you while you give us an update on what's going on in the state of New Hampshire.
Thank you so much for having me today. I really appreciate it and especially getting to see the officers getting sworn in. It was a real pleasure, so thank you so much. So, what's been happening in Concord this, this term? Things have been a little bit more separated and divided than the last session. So, I'll start with some of the happier things that we got through this, this year. So, one of the big highlights that might be good to look into for even communities here in Barrington is something that we passed called social districts. This legalizes open containers of alcohol in certain communities, in certain zoned areas. So, it could be something where, depending, you know, if there is a revitalization of some areas here in town, that could be something that people look into. I know that that's something that Barrington would be a little bit far away from, but it is still something that is exciting that we're bringing up. We did have some other local related bills to things like tenants' rights. So, if some of you, I'm not sure how many of you are aware of how we used to deal with certain tenants' rights. We were a no-cause eviction state, and that meant that we had to have a reason to remove somebody from a property if we were not going to renew that to them. And this is a situation where, right now, on the governor's desk, we have HB 60, which is a bill that would allow tenants to be removed and evicted without any cause. So, this kind of removes in certain barriers that had been set up and certain protections that had been set up for these people so that they aren't necessarily just being removed from our, from their housing, which especially right now with the housing crisis that our state has been facing, it is especially important that we try to keep people where they are if it's unnecessary to move them. As for some of our education policies, unfortunately, we're going to probably see a downturn in education funding from the state level. We passed a bill HB 115, which expands the voucher program here in the state, the school voucher program here in the state, to anybody of any income level. Before, there was an income cap and that kind of helped kind of manage this program. However, we're going to see increased funds with already, I believe, 10,000 new applicants with the bill passing, I believe, last month and being signed into, into law. So, there's been an extreme increase in state funds that are going to this that would otherwise go to local communities like ours. And that kind of brings me into our state budget, which fortunately, here in the community.
I'm going to interrupt you on, so I had read the breakdown of the prior year's expenditures on those vouchers. They were being used for dance camp, they were being used for horseback riding camp, they were being used for swim lessons.
Yes.
Is that going to continue with these new 10,000 applicants?
As far as I'm aware, there have been no changes or restrictions placed on the program.
Okay. Thank you.
And to, to that effect, I mean, going into the budget, though, it is something where we are going to see a lot of shortfalls. We're seeing a huge loss in revenue from last term because we have eliminated the interest in dividends tax, which is about $200 to $400 million a year annually that we're missing out on. Unfortunately, that means that we have to find funds elsewhere, which usually means local communities are the ones who have to foot the bill. I am fortunate enough to say that all of our representatives here in the district voted against the budget. That includes Republicans and Democrats. And it is a situation where this is a budget that only passed by one vote. The speaker broke the tie, and I'm really disappointed about how House leadership handled this situation because usually on a piece of legislation this massive, you want to have a discussion about the legislation. You want to have a discussion about what you're actually going to be voting on. And unfortunately, we saw a situation where the question was moved, meaning that debate was ended before anybody could say anything. So, I was actually going to speak on the budget and how it affected those on Medicaid because we're seeing significant cuts to DHHS, and it was one of three reasons why the governor said that she was going to originally veto the budget. She said that two retirement funds were one of the reasons, which was fixed in another bill, and Manchester School District funding was another reason. But the third reason that she said that she was going to veto the budget was DHHS slash Medicaid funds. Unfortunately, that did not get fixed, and it was not even discussed on the House floor. This is a situation where we're going to see people on Medicaid, they're already low-income, they're going to be forced to pay an income tax of upwards of $238 a month in order to access their care. So, we're going to be in a really tough spot in terms of people being able to access the most basic levels of what should be available. So, this is something that I was really passionate about as we're seeing $51 million cut on the front end before we're seeing even some of the back-end cuts, and was something that I felt money could have moved around, been moved around for because there is a number, there are a number of other nonessential programs that are being funded, but this one is not. And I feel that this is something that is so essential that it needs to be addressed. In total, I mean, we've been able to communicate a little bit on this issue, and unfortunately, the, the governor with how she has kind of addressed this, I wish that she comes back to the table next session with a way that we can handle and address these Medicaid gaps that we're going to be seeing. But that's going to be still six months where we're not in session, where this is not going to be addressed and handled. With that, that kind of summarizes a number of the major things that we've handled and conquered so far, and I'm open to any other questions about specific pieces of legislation or topics that you would like to discuss more in depth.
So, Alexander, go ahead.
Just simply because, you know, we, from a municipal governance perspective, are really taking an outside-in look at what's going on in Concord. I was just curious what you see as coming down the pike is probably the biggest challenge for municipalities like Barrington, based on what you were hearing boots on the ground in Concord in this last legislative session?
Yeah. So, I mean, two, two major things. Zoning is going to be the big one because there are top-down approaches that we're seeing being brought to the zoning issue where there are going to be statewide fixes for a number of things that should be kind of more locally zoned. So, that is something that has been pushed. I mean, some of these changes are not necessarily a bad idea in terms of like the standardization of building codes, for instance, which isn't necessarily zoning, but it is zoning-adjacent. But we're not necessarily seeing a number of ways that we can actually see local amendments to some of these zoning codes, for instance. So, that's something that I'm really trying to push for in Concord and see a little bit more of a discussion on. Secondly, it's going to be education funding. Education funding, as I had mentioned earlier, is going to be significantly reliant on local funds to make up a lot of the gaps that we're seeing from the federal and state levels not coming through. So, that's going to ultimately increase local taxes on people here in Barrington, and I wish that that wasn't the case, but it's the unfortunate facts.
Since the Supreme Court said that funding, the adequate funding, constitutional funding is about twice of what now is on the board, and apparently, everyone's going to ignore that. So, I'm wondering, who to impeach? Someone's violating the law here. What, what, what are we to do about that?
Yeah. I, I, that is a very good question. I've been trying to wrap my brain around that because this is a situation where the state has been avoiding its constitutional requirements for 30 years. This goes back to the Claremont decision back in the 1990s where they were supposed to legally fund our schools up to a constitutional level, and we have not done that. Who we should be holding accountable is probably the legislature. In people in my shoes, unfortunately, it seems that there, there is little accountability in that.
So, you mentioned zoning. I'm not sure where the statewide zoning went. I didn't see that got signed into law.
I don't believe that was signed into law yet. How, I would recommend that you call the governor about it to, to have a further discussion and kind of portray Barrington's stance on this. I think it might be. I would double-check on that.
Yeah. Most of the statewide zoning initiatives, and there were many, right? There isn't just one. There, there are many. Most of them that were the most impactful to Barrington failed for a variety of reasons. The minimum lot sizes is one of them. The ones that made it through, and I don't know if the governor signed all of them or not, but are less impactful to Barrington. One of them relates to accessory dwelling units. Right now, one of the best examples of existing statewide zoning is the state a number of years ago said that every zoning code has to allow accessory dwelling units of, up to a certain square feet. The state zoning was previously that they had to be attached to the primary dwelling. In Barrington, we, using our local control, decided that they could be detached. Now, the statewide zoning will be that they can be detached also. There are other regulations about parking. Previously, there was a requirement of limit, statewide limit on one and a half parking spaces per unit, you know, for a multifamily or otherwise. That went down to one. Again, not super impactful to Barrington. We don't have the kind of density where you see parking become a big problem and our regulations around that. So, the advocacy by certainly board members, the municipal association and others against the initiatives that eroded local control was essential and successful, even in areas that there was really, a really strong feeling that local control would be eroded with statewide zoning. It's a, it's a weird bipartisan issue that there, you know, you had, you know, senators, especially that from both parties, fighting on both sides of these pieces of legislation. So, really fascinating case study in politics and influence. You know, I think the folks who were most concerned about the statewide zoning, the concern was based in a perceived influence from industry in state laws for local regulations. And that was concerning to folks. You know, our representative Turcot was one of, one of the few very vocal members of his party in opposition to these statewide zoning initiatives and really came from that angle of, you know, this is, this is outside influence on, on what's happening. So, like I said, we dodged a lot of the bullets.
Yep. And I, I, I will say, there is one thing that I did forget to mention related to some of the election law bills and the voting bills. There is a specific one related to those with disabilities, HB 613. It's currently on the governor's desk, and there are kind of two choices that the governor has because there are these accessible voting systems that are available, and we are supposed to, by law, provide them by, to people. We have two different fixes, HB 67 and HB 613. HB 67 requires that all municipalities are supposed to have them, and HB 613 is a requirement that somebody has to request one, I believe, two months or three months in advance in order for it to be placed at that polling location. The problem is with 613 is that we're going to get into severe lawsuits, and that's going to end up costing us as a state more money than if we just outright bought the systems, in my opinion. Because when we're looking at a situation like this, the group, there are a number of accessibility-based groups that are going to be launching lawsuits into this. And I've already talked to a number of other advocates that say that HB 67 would just be a very straightforward approach. It's something where, as is, these are not necessarily the most expensive systems in the world, and the more expensive systems are the actual vote tabulators, which we're still looking into purchasing at the state level.
I did hear yesterday that New Hampshire is the fourth hardest state to vote in the nation.
Yep. I'm, I'm, I'm going to share the perspective of someone who has worked for 15 years with people that experience homelessness. This no-cause eviction state and allowing people who have had expired leases but are tenants-at-will, it's going to affect your people at the lowest socioeconomic levels, and it's going to affect our elderly like they cannot even anticipate because our elderly tend to try and age in place. And while they are quiet as tenants, they do not have parties as tenants, they do tend to, as they're aging, make a lot of phone calls to landlord's offices, have a lot of requests for things. I can see this affecting our elderly population, and I think we should have studied it better. That's one person's opinion.
I, I completely agree. I, as, you know, this is going to allow landlords to, as you say, evict annoying tenants, not necessarily annoying to their neighbors, but maybe annoying to the landlord.
Mm-hmm. Sure. I'm, I'm fully aware of what's going to happen. Yes. Thank you for being here tonight. Any other questions before we move forward?
I did have one. Here in Barrington, we have a voter guide that's been well-received by voters, and I'm concerned that some of the legislation that the governor was supposed to sign this week may have put that up in the air about whether we could do that. Do we know the?
Relative to electioneering.
Yes. Yeah. That, I am not 100% sure if that's going to still be allowed. I wish that I, I knew, but based off of the situation in Godstown, it would have to be very neutral and very carefully worded.
Okay.
The, the core problem, in my opinion, with the legislation on the governor's desk is it, it clarifies in the wrong direction electioneering in New Hampshire and makes anybody involved subject to Mr. Middle-Level offense for their involvement. And so, the electioneering needs to be addressed statewide because there, there isn't case law and there, the current legislation is very vague. And so, you have even legal experts recommend a wide range of, of implementations for how you avoid violating the electioneering law. The problem, in my opinion, is we are at a point in society where our residents expect us to deliver to them the information that's important to them. And the objective information, like what would appear on a ballot with the legalese required by state law, isn't sufficient to, for the layperson to understand the decisions that they're making. And in a community like Barrington, where we have an SB 2 form of government, the most impactful decisions in our community are made by our residents. I feel a deep sense of responsibility to provide, as a community, our residents with the information necessary to make informed decisions. Now, part of that information, in my opinion, is they elect their elected leaders in the select board. The select board appoints a committee, the Advisory Budget Committee, to review all this in detail on the resident's behalf. Every resident isn't expected to understand every minute detail of the budget. But when the select board takes a vote to recommend or not recommend the budget, or especially when that's a split vote, including their justification in why they feel that way, is really important. And that, at the core of the electioneering change, is what is on the chopping block. So, not being able to hear from your elected leaders the, the why of a support or a not support and, and more narrative around the, you know, what is up for a decision. And so, I think it's really problematic, and I think the big losers are the residents who are expected to vote. And I feel very proud that in Barrington, two years ago, we had 41% voter turnout. This last year, we had over 30% voter turnout, and we're talking 7,000 registered voters. And that's a direct result of voters feeling empowered to make impactful decisions and feeling like they have access to information and being informed. And so, I think it's the wrong direction. I think it does need to be fixed, but I think it's very much the wrong direction.
Yeah. I think that's well summarized, and unfortunately, this case came about because of people who felt that their local community was involved in putting out a questionnaire. And, and I have great respect for the, the representatives who, who were involved in this case. However, I feel that the situation involving them was taken a little bit too personally to the state level and has been maximized to the extreme, and.
This is where the library trustees put out a questionnaire, and the candidates felt like the questions that were asked were loaded questions. Kind of a legitimate concern. The library won in court by explaining that these were questions that were submitted to us from the community, like the trustees didn't sit around a table and come up with the questions. Probably the more outrageous example is in Nashua, the, what are their counselors called? Aldermen, right? So, they, they had a contentious issue in the city, and they used their local broadcast channel to allow the count, the alderman in support and in opposition to kind of state their case to the community. And the attorney general's office in the state of New Hampshire said, "No, no, you can't do that." Now, it wasn't ever, you know, they were, they were reprimanded, you know, didn't, they didn't have a day in court, essentially. And the attorney general's office didn't make this report until years later. But that's what the people want. The people want to know how people feel about these impactful things in their community, and to, to put a muzzle on that is offensive to democracy.
And we're really going to have to talk about this.
Of course.
The implications of this and what we say.
And I did write to the governor. I haven't heard back, but it's, you know, it's challenging.
Yeah. And this, this does relate back to exactly what happened on the House budget, or not the House budget, but the, the state budget and how we voted on it without hearing a full debate and hearing a full conversation as to what is going to happen. And I think that you're exactly right. It's something where people want to hear this discussion, they want to hear the debate, they want to hear what is going to happen and what the opinions are.
Interesting question is, if you're coming up for election and you're incumbent here and you're up for election, how do you, how do you differentiate yourself in a, in a debate, a candidate debate, not electioneering in many ways?
So, you can do that because the, the, the root of electioneering, the current law and the proposed changes are the use of government resources. So, as a political candidate, you would still have every right you do to speak your mind and, and say, but your voice is, your voice only goes as far as you can project it. And the, for the government's purpose, our role is not to, our role is absolutely not to guide somebody's decision in a certain way. Our, our. Our role is to allow people to make informed decisions. But I believe that you can't do that adequately, especially with contentious topics, without presenting the sides of an issue, without presenting, this is why people support it, this is why people oppose it. And giving equal weight and not, you know, not presenting it in a way, but using the real voices of members of the select board and members of the budget committee. So, that's where, like, the reason it would be electioneering in a voter guide and not at a debate would be because the voter guide is printed on a printer that has paper and it paid for by the taxpayers. And, you know, you're at a forum where you're able to...
Crazy.
Yeah. Yeah, it's challenging.
Well, we will take what we've been given and we will, yeah.
Allowing us to discuss this issue. It was really fundamental to how we do business.
It is.
How we inform our...
And I think it's appreciated by the residents. So, it'll be interesting to see how we have to proceed. Thank you for sharing with us. We have a full boat of things on our agenda. We just appreciate you taking the time, come from Concord, share with us at this level what's happening that's going to impact us. And so, thank you. And thank you for your service.
Well, thank you all. I mean, I always say this, the local people, you guys do way more work and it's way harder than we do at the state. I will say, it's a very unrewarding job and I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, a lot of our questions are kind of speaking to the choir here.
Yes.
You get hammered.
Yeah.
Because you have the thing on your collar.
Up next would be our school board liaison, but we do not have them present here. I will ask Connor just to give a quick update on the reduced speed school zone so that people are aware of where next steps are for that.
Yes. Following the advocacy of Executive Counselor Stephen, I was contacted by Lee Baronis, who's the Traffic Bureau Administrator. He acknowledged that there was more work to be done in evaluating the request. He plans to visit Barrington. I encouraged him to reach out so we could involve ourselves in their visit to Barrington. And he said that at a minimum, he would expect to provide possible solutions. So, those solutions may or may not be what we requested, but solutions that will help address the concerns that we have for the safety in and around the schools and the motoring public along the way. So, progress. I appreciate the advocacy of our Executive Counselor and I'm optimistic that we'll have a solution for our community.
Excellent. Could you also give an update? Did the school board vote for the net metering project in the role?
Yes. They voted to join. And that initiative, again, brought forward by Barrington's Energy Committee, is something that will return the residents of Barrington tens of thousands of dollars as part of the group net metering program once this, that's per year, tens of thousands of dollars per year, once this poverty planes project goes live.
Excellent. Thank you. Up next, Paul Pennish, please. Speaking on behalf of both the Community Power Update and then moving on to the Soul Smart. Paul, I'm sorry to tell you that I've been asked to keep this meeting as short as possible, so I'm going to ask for the bullet point versions.
Four slides. Let me bring it up. I knew that I would want to try to keep it short. We'll see what your questions are and I'll keep it as short as I can.
Thank you, sir.
And you can always cut me off, as you know. So, I had hoped to have good news. As you'll recall, I believe the last time I was here was the last rate announcement. I do not have good news. These are the rates that are going into effect August 1st through the end of January. The rate is, the community power rate is higher, significantly higher than the ever-source rate. So, for residential services, you can see here, ever-source is about 11.2, community power is 13.4. So, we did not make it. There are a number of reasons that we can get into. This is the shortened version. It's only showing ever-source in Barrington. I'll go on. The coalition has gone to a different type of rate-setting procedure. It's now called the cost of service electric rate. What that means is, in the past, there's been a uniform rate across all utilities. Basically, the coalition paid, had one rate. There are numerous classes, of course, residential, commercial. But there was one rate for all utilities. They've realized that the cost of serving different utilities is significantly different. There's a requirement in the guidelines and rules of procedure for how the coalition is run that requires them to take cost of service into account, as is reasonably practicable. As a result, they now are taking into account the cost of service for the different utilities and there are different rates for each utility area. This could become more granular in the future. It's not really, it's probably not possible for them to get granular down to the municipal, community level, member level. But they could conceive, there's just too much data there. I mean, the amount of data that they're dealing with already is pretty overwhelming. But they could conceivably come up with groups of communities and I could see that happening in the future. I asked the question, they said it's possible, they don't know. But this is the way things are beginning to go. I have this here for your information if you want to look at how ever-source communities compare with the other utilities. It's interesting, the rates are going to go up for everyone. It's a little bit alarming. So, to summarize, electricity rates are increasing across the board for all utilities. The average is about 38%. But the rate of ever-source's increase in rates is actually, ever-source is only up about 25%. So, it's lower than the average. The average is 38. Ever-source is only at 25. I'm trying to see what I wrote here and it's confusing me. Oh, yes. So, the CP, the community power rate for ever-source districts is also up more than the 38% average. It is up 47%. So, these are really significant increases. There are reasons for that. There have been a number of dockets that were filed. I think I mentioned it the last time I was before you, that the reconciliation process for various utilities had not been cleanly resolved. There were undercharges by most of the utilities. This was a result of how the PUC required them to set rates, actually, to some extent. And there was a proposal that those losses would be recovered, not from the rate payers who had underpaid, but it would be socialized across the entire New Hampshire rate-paying base. There are at least two, probably more dockets before, that were brought before the PUC. Only one has been addressed so far. That was the Unitil case. So, Unitil has been required to do some cost recovery. They're not allowed to socialize it, but they also have not, it has not been mandated that they have to do the full recovery as of this point in time. The ever-source docket has not come up yet. As a result, they are not doing any cost recovery yet at all. They continue to undercharge, we believe, based on the modeling, the modeling that's being done by the coalition now is probably among the most sophisticated in the state. And based on their modeling, it appears that ever-source is continuing to undercharge and we anticipate that there will be additional fees, which will have to be reconciled at some point in time. But it's not clear what that point in time...
And let's hope that's not across all utilities.
Well, it has been, it's not, so the co-op has, as usual, has not been part of this. So, Liberty, I believe that that case was resolved. They were actually, they went along pretty well with it. They were not proposing to socialize the costs and I believe that theirs has been fully reconciled at this point. Unitil, as I said, decision came down, they are to some, they're not allowed to socialize the costs. They are, to some extent, participating in cost recovery. It's part of why their rates are up. And they're up more than the other utilities. Ever-source is still in question and we will see.
Questions?
Yeah. Well, I thought when we discussed whether we should be part of this, I thought at one point you said that the worst that could happen is that we would go to the ever-source rate.
No. No. Basically, the way we laid it out is, at the outset, there was a requirement that the coalition rate had to be lower than the ever-source rate. But after the initial rates, where the rates go is where the rates go. You know, the coalition has mandated in the bylaws that they have to meet their costs and they have to, they're establishing reserves. Now, ever-source has been around for a long time. They have a huge amount of credit that they can call on. They don't need to worry about things like reserves. The coalition had policies in place that stated that they had to build up reserves at a certain rate. They had to have 60 days of reserves within, I don't remember what the original timeframe was. And they would end up having 120 days of reserves within five years. As you'll recall, last winter, they got into significant problems. And those problems became clear, actually, in the month, or more clear in the month since I last spoke with you. They basically burned all the reserves that they had saved up to the tune of $8 million. And they are effectively down to zero at this point. This resulted in, I don't know if I should say this on here, but basically, I believe that was the reason that they fired the CEO. He made, I think he made a gamble. If you'll recall, there was a biomass plant that was supposed to come online that would provide a significant amount of power for the coalition, which, in the last week before they were supposed to go online, failed in some way. I don't know how. I think there was a gamble that was made based on that. And the gamble was lost. And I think that was what, I think that's the short story of what happened.
Okay. So, in summation, we should be allowing our residents to know that they can change, should they choose to...
Right.
...to other providers.
So, let me address that a little bit. The choices, obviously, the town always has the choice of pulling out of the coalition. It's an involved process. It takes some time. There can be certain fees that are incurred because the coalition has purchased power already for future purposes for the town. I would not recommend that you go that way. And I have to be open here. I am ideologically inclined towards the coalition. I believe in what they do. I think they provide a valuable service. I probably will skip my list of things that they do beyond just basic rate services. But one of the primary things that you get by being a member of the coalition is that any customer for power in Barrington can change at any time between utility default rate, coalition default rate, or a broker service. Those are all, and you have to wait until the next meter reading for it to take effect. But any customer can change at any point in time. If we were to go back to utility default service, you would lose the ability to take advantage of any of the advantages that the coalition offers.
Understood.
So, I would...
And I think that's the real headline. So, the town of Barrington, as an electricity user during the last rate cycle, went back to the ever-source default rate because it was cheaper and we're spending taxpayer dollars and we want to spend the fewest taxpayer dollars and we don't really care where electrons come from. And so, the benefit to the community, including the town's electricity user, is that you can just switch. Previously, the town brokered our electricity supply. And we may do that in the future if the rates are better. The rates haven't been better or good enough for the termed contract. And so, included in the town administrator report, and maybe we'll put it out on social media on the town's website with prominence, but any customer in Barrington can call 1-866-603-7697 and they can ask to switch their electricity provider from Community Power Coalition, if they are, back to the ever-source default rate. Can also visit www.communitypowernh.gov and do the same thing.
And that information is on your electric bills, by the way.
And it's on your electric bills. And then, there's also an additional service that the state of New Hampshire puts out. And I won't read the URL, but it's in the town administrator report, where it basically gives a running tally of electricity supply costs among a variety of providers, including the third-party market, which, your mileage may vary, I mean, you've got to talk to them. A lot of times, they want a termed contract a year or longer. And so, the, as the Chair of the Energy Committee mentioned, now that we are a member of Community Power Coalition, all of our customers in Barrington have the ability to switch back and forth as the rates allow. For the first rate cycle, community power was a lot cheaper, everybody was there, that's great. Second rate cycle is a little bit higher, people can move. Now, it's a little bit more higher, people can move. Go to ever-source, pay less. Nobody's asking anybody to pay more money. But it's different than entering a termed contract like the option you had before.
It is.
One step I want to mention, or just so it doesn't get missed in the meeting, people had to sign up for the coalition, right?
Incorrect.
Incorrect. So, well...
That was default.
That was the vote in March of 2024.
So, they're defaulted into that program unless you were a current solar user, right?
Or had a third-party contract, yeah.
Gotcha.
So...
One thing that I wouldn't mention in regards to that is, the problem here is information dissemination to the town's residents. One thing that the coalition now has is that you can sign up for notification of rate changes. So, the trouble, once again, is notifying people that they can sign up for notifications of these sorts, but at least they're moving in the direction of trying to make it easier.
Okay. Yeah. It is, it's an unfortunate, it's unfortunate, surprising. What else do we need to know in a nutshell?
I need to know...
Anticipate the establishment of reserves are going to take 12 months, 24 months? Like, if those reserves are required, do we have an estimation of the amount of time? Go ahead.
So, as I said, if you look at the slide that's up now, there are different components to the cost of service. So, most of it is energy supply. About 8.5% is the joint reserve contributions. The modeling that they have now put in place to resolve the issues that, to some extent, brought about the situation over the winter, they're able to very accurately target now. And there was a vote on how quickly did they want to build up these reserves. The choices were, for a 60-day reserve level, did they want to do it in three years, five years? And I think there was a longer timeframe. They wanted to do it quickly because they were very close to this when they lost it all. And they want to get back to where they were. So, within three years, the way they're setting rates now, they're targeting a 60-day reserve level within three years. And I believe 120 still within five.
Okay. Good to know. Should we move on to solar so that we can discuss ways that we're not going to pay electric bills?
Well, I wish we could. I don't think the feds are going to allow that. I don't know that I need to go into the rest of this. I can send Connor my talking points. These are, you know, as I said, I'm ideologically aligned with the coalition. I really support a lot of these points and what's gone into them. Poverty Plains falls out of this. Those are some of the services which the coalition hopes to be able to offer more widely and with much more scale in the future. We'll see what happens with that. But it would take a lot of time for me to go through this. I don't think you need to listen to my spiel.
I think we'll be watching each quarter and see what these rates look like and moving from there.
Every half. I wish you could do it every quarter.
Soul Smart certification. Let's talk about something positive about energy right now.
This is the point of light. And I need to modify what Connor said. I have been working on a few things over the past few weeks. We have now qualified for gold certification.
We've, what?
Gold certification.
Wow.
Not bronze.
Wow. Okay.
So, just, you know, for the public, in a sentence, tell us why this is important.
Okay. Okay. I am less excited about this than a lot of people. For me, the main point was, and I have to say here, kudos go to, and maybe you know who this would be, whoever put in place the existing solar zoning ordinance for the town really did.
Kef Brandt, former chair of the planning board.
Okay. He actually did a really good job. A lot of what the Soul Smart process was about was pulling together proposals for zoning ordinances and getting them at least advanced within the town. We already had a solar zoning ordinance, and it actually is very good. So, an awful lot of the requirements that we had to meet were already there in advance. There were a few pieces that were not. These were mainly process-oriented, so it turned out that the, there was no solar permit. You used a standard electrical permit. There was no mention of solar on it anywhere. So, it didn't really fit. We did put together a solar permit and a solar checklist, which should help people get through this process. It explains a lot of what's involved. It makes very clear what materials need to be submitted. I think those were the key points in what we did. There's also, there were requirements for what the Energy Committee has been doing in terms of putting out information on its website, putting some additional information in there, establishing an education process where if people are interested, they have someplace to go on the website, which will lead them to other destinations. But there was an awful lot that was in place.
It's exciting news. So, we'll be gold standard. We like that designation.
Outstanding, yeah.
And Paul will accept that designation at an event. Remind me when?
Local Energy Solutions in September.
Local Energy Solutions in September.
Excellent.
And that was everything I had.
Thank you, sir, for your hard work.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you for your support.
Okay. Up next, is your consent agenda. I had one simple question.
Yes.
On the Turkey Trot.
Yes.
Where the language says, "We authorize the utilization of town resources if available", that does not mean that our police officers are providing support that the town is paying for for this, does it?
That is what that means. So, similar to the PEPER 5K, the organizers coordinate with law enforcement and, you know, in this case, the ambulance service to understand availability and staffing. And when it's available outside of the duty crew, the support is provided to help keep the event safe and effective. But yes, that has been the ask of the select board since the inaugural Turkey Trot three years ago. Generally, the police chief has done it himself, and that's something that he has done consistently. But yes, that is what that means.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the July 14, 2025 consent agenda A through J as presented.
Do I have a second? One second. Capiello? Roll call vote, please.
Sumaco, aye.
And Shrek, aye, but I'm going to have to recuse myself from the minutes of June 16, as I did not attend.
Thank you, sir.
Good point. I actually need to recuse for June 6.
Thank you, ma'am.
On to you, Joyce.
I approve.
Sakosha.
And I think, were you absent for one of those meetings that you want to recuse yourself on that meeting for? Very good. I know we have at least a quorum.
An all-female quorum.
Yep, there you go. And Hardikoff, aye. Next up, appointments.
No appointments.
Seeing as there's no other appointments, moving on to the staff report from Administrator McIver.
Yes, thank you. Starting with July anniversaries, there are only three. But, starting with maybe the most surprising work anniversary is, our own Parks and Recreation Director has worked for the town of Barrington, been on the payroll for the town of Barrington for 20 years now. Not discuss her age in detail, but I will tell you, that is more than half of her life, which is just remarkable. Yes.
From a HR perspective, it's good you didn't tell us her age. Who are we going?
So Josh Turner joined the Police Department as a per diem officer three years ago, and Lou McCutcheon at the transfer station, the lead attendant, joined three years ago also. Moving on to town center updates. So, as you know, over the last year and even a little bit longer, there's been a lot of energy and momentum gaining around what the vision for the town center is. What does that mean? How do we achieve it? How do we make sure we can achieve it, et cetera. And so, I want to give a few updates on those projects that are kind of all culminating very nicely. So first, the master plan implementation update. We hired a team of consultants last year, grant-funded $100,000 grant. The first focus was conservation subdivisions. Their focus now is the town center. So we have a market analysis, which I gave you all a copy of in the last meeting materials, that has been distilled down to a double-sided sheet with key findings and opinions and recommendations, preliminary opinions and recommendations. And so, that work is now feeding into what is the vision? How do we accomplish it? And so, on Wednesday morning, we will meet the consultant team with a variety of business owners and landowners and developers in and around the town center to talk about this market analysis, talk about what it means, talk about the opinions and recommendations, and from the folks that would be making the investment in our community, what does it mean? How do our regulations align with what we hear from residents? They want to see in terms of the town center. And so, following that effort, the consultant team will continue looking at case studies and fleshing out an updated vision for what the community is looking for in a town center. And I want to make an important distinction based on the conversation I had earlier today. You know, when we talk about a town center, we're not talking about downtown Dover. You know, a core part of a town center in Barrington is the kind of rural aesthetic and the open space and having trails that connect things and maybe not sidewalks everywhere. And so, town center, the town center concept in Barrington is uniquely Barrington. It's not a, you know, it's not a metropolis. But defining that and making sure people understand it, making sure developers that are looking to invest in Barrington understand it, is really important and a core part of this project. So, we plan at this point, and this is like a pencil-in-date, but we plan on Sunday, September 21, to have a resident engagement event. Likely, that will take place in the town center, and we'll present on some of these findings and give next steps and seek input and kind of fine-tune what the vision is and how we achieve it. So that's the master plan implementation work.
I'd like to just leave one comment. I really enjoyed reading the report, the two-page summary. When it talks about that the town of Barrington can support 400 or 500 new housing, you know, the larger report says by 2050. And I think that's a different message to residents than not having that year there. Because everyone kind of thinks, oh, this is going to happen this year.
Yeah. And that's just based on population trends. That's not, you know, that's, and for me, and I appreciate that distinction, and I think we should adjust the messaging to reflect that, because the message isn't, "We need 450 or 500 more housing units." The message is, "It's fair to expect that the market will be saturated with 450 or 500 more housing units because of the market-driven population changes, the growth that we're experiencing right now." You know, we aren't calling developers and saying, "Please build 100-unit housing development in our community." That isn't, that isn't something that we're doing. The market is driving that. The demand for housing and the demand in Barrington has driven an individual vacant lot value in Barrington up to like $250,000. It's really surprising what's happening. But yeah, that's an important distinction. I'm glad you pointed that out. So, going alongside, you remember last year, early last year, we started a trail interconnectivity group that was, you know, began some good groundwork on trail interconnectivity throughout Barrington. We got aligned with this program offered by UNH Cooperative Extension called Downtowns and Trails. So, they have done a wide variety of data collection. They're in the analysis phase right now. We're going to have a meeting with stakeholders, including the select board and Trail Interconnectivity Group, probably sometime in mid-August. I'll get in touch with you on dates for that. But then we plan, we just had a coordinating meeting today, we plan to have kind of the final presentation of findings and recommendations at that September 21 event. So, to bring those projects together and have a captive audience of residents and discuss that then. So, that's a very exciting project that will help guide how we achieve what we're looking for in the town center. The Barrington Center Development Committee had a meeting last week, and we talked about a variety of topics, including our congressionally-directed spending that we have before Congress right now, welcome to Barrington signs, programming, water interconnectivity, and maybe a nonprofit group to support the work of the town center, and that there's a project application before the zoning board that the group discussed extensively. I included a copy in the packet of a letter that the Barrington Center Development Committee agreed to send to the zoning board regarding this application as it relates to the mission of the Barrington Center Development Committee. And so, as we start to, as we start to focus on the town center and kind of achieving this vision, we hope that the Barrington Center Development Committee, either through the TIF district and those funds, or separately, will have the opportunity to work with developers to help fine-tune the proposals in Barrington to align with the priorities that have been identified by residents and otherwise. And so, this is, you know, certainly on a much smaller scale in that way, but looking for projects that are happening in the area and weighing in on areas of importance identified in the mission and vision of the Barrington Center Development Committee is something that the group will be looking at. Moving on, the Chief Conway Community Park was named on June 19. So this is a very exciting event in the community, and now officially, the Ramsdale Lane Park is the Chief Conway Community Park. Similarly, on July 10, there was a ribbon cutting at the new library. I know all five select board members were there, which is terrific. And on Saturday, they had an event programmed specifically for kids and families. They had 500 people show up on Saturday to support the opening of the new library and the space for kids in that new building. Other project updates, the Old Settlers Road Bridge. This is an 80% state-funded project. This was awarded by the select board in April. We had a pre-construction meeting recently, and they presented us with their proposed construction schedule, which includes mobilizing in September to install the water diversion in the bypass road, and then they'll come back in November and install the structure between November and early December, and then they'll come back in May to take out the water diversion and do the stone wall work. A lot of that schedule is driven by DES requirements for the water diversion. Basically, it can't be touched between October and May. So it either has to be in and out before October, or in before October and out after May. And don't ask me which animal that's protecting, but it is the best practice for the work that needs to be done in that waterway. And again, the town's 20% funding was awarded by voters in March of 2024, so 8% funding by the state, 20% by the town, which we already have cash in hand. The community center renovation project, so now the library is moved, that space is vacant. Construction will start in the coming weeks with some of the exterior work down by the gym, and then they'll quickly move into the gym. The plan, as it stands right now, that construction schedule would have the gym open and ready to go in November, so we can continue programming. You know, winter basketball should be able to happen, no problem, with the new gym wall. There will be construction continuing on the inner portion of the downstairs offices and obviously the work upstairs, and that is estimated to be complete in March. Samantha.
Is there going to be, how is this going to affect the food pantry?
It shouldn't. It's an excellent question. So we've been in close contact with the folks at the food pantry to understand what their needs are and make sure that the construction wouldn't impact that. The big activities of the food pantry are certainly the Thanksgiving and Christmas baskets, and so aligning the construction, the completion of the construction of the gym in time for the Thanksgiving baskets was a priority for us. So that is a part of the schedule. The other thing that we didn't really understand completely without going through this process is the food pantry, even though they're just open on Thursdays, there, the traffic to the food pantry, the deliveries, the drop-offs are sporadic all throughout the week. And so, we were kind of anticipating, in terms of construction, you know, staging area and work area, that we just kind of have to have it open, you know, a couple of days a week. And so, the operations of the food pantry aren't really conducive to that. So, there'll be access to the food pantry 24/7/365 during construction, and so that was a priority, certainly. And again, this project funded a $1 million state grant as the primary funding for this project. There was $300,000 included in the library bond and $150,000, which is coming from the Recreation Revolving Fund. And so, we're excited about this project and hope to have ribbon cutting early, early spring of 2026.
Pop a tag.
Very exciting.
Very. Let's go.
And training opportunities, a list of training opportunities for your interest there. And that's all I have.
Okay. Moving on to municipal office administrator call, please.
I have nothing additional for any of you to sign.
We appreciate that. Okay.
Me too.
Under old business. Back to you, Mr. McIver.
Yes, so, we had a joint meeting, as you all know, with the select board representatives and staff from Lee and Madbury to discuss fire regionalization and increased cooperation. One thing that came up during that meeting is a report that the town of Madbury commissioned by Municipal Resources Incorporated relative to the provision of fire service in Madbury. So, there are a lot of exercises that were completed as a part of this report that have application far beyond just Madbury in terms of regionalization, what options communities have, and what data is important to consider. And so, that document is publicly available, obviously, but I include a printed copy for you all for your reading pleasure. At the joint meeting, the decision was made to convene a working group made up of the chiefs in each community and a select board representative, and eventually, the plan would be to have a resident representative from each community, but we figured we'd wait until we kind of got started there. So one of my pieces of homework was to start putting together a charge, which I have for you here in case you have input, but we'll let the working group kind of weigh in and then bring it back for finalization. And then, the only action item related to this is to have the select board appoint a representative to be a part of the working group.
So, one thing in reading through this, I'm of the mindset that the collect and analyze data, when we talk call volumes, is not the only analysis that should be done. Instead, the type of call response and the call response times and length.
Right.
I think is of utmost importance to this group, and that that collection of data will definitely help formulate many other areas of information.
Appreciate that.
So, what are these meetings looking like, frequency?
So that's unknown. So, we'd like to get a representative meet and then kind of establish some of those expectations. If I were to bet, the true work of this committee will be done by the chiefs, and they're already doing that work. They've created a comprehensive spreadsheet to collect data like this and shared amongst themselves to start doing the analysis. And so I think these meetings are going to largely be check-in meetings so that everybody can be along for the ride, and the select board representatives can report back, and so everybody stays in the loop. So it isn't an exercise that's happening in a vacuum behind the scenes, but there's, you know, light being shone on it constantly. And I think the role of the select board members especially will be to take what they're hearing from the fire chiefs in the communities, talking about collaboration possibilities and possible regionalization, and say, "These are the challenges that we'll face politically in decision-making in our communities," and kind of put that political decision-making hat on while the fire chiefs are bringing the expertise of what it actually takes to provide a provision of fire service. And so, that's really the ask. Meeting frequency, I don't know. Meeting time a day, I don't know. We'll kind of work those details out once we get the group made up. And we wanted to get those answers before we invited a resident member because they'd want to know that also. Good questions.
Is there anyone who was volunteering?
If it gets super busy involved, it might be challenging for me, but, you know, I'd be okay taking it on, checking it out, and, you know, we get good help. So, yeah, I'd be willing to take it on.
I would make a motion that we appoint Vice Chair Sakosha to this committee.
All right.
Roll call, please.
Sumaco, aye.
Samaco, aye.
Mantra, aye.
Capella, aye.
Skosia.
And Hardakoff, aye.
Do you want to appoint an alternate in case?
Sure.
Or just anybody that's available? I mean, any Select Board member could be.
I would say if you're going to miss a meeting, put it out to the Select Board.
Perfect.
And one of us take it on, how's that?
Sounds good.
Awesome. And obviously, we'll have the benefit of, I'll be attending all of the meetings, and so, you know, we'll have, we'll certainly have continuity of information.
Okay. Onto the library M O U, please, sir.
Yes, so we are fortunate in Barrington to have a very strong working relationship with our library. That is, I would say, not necessarily the, the complete exception, but in terms of the range of how cooperative a town government and a library can be in New Hampshire, we are at the, the more cooperative end of that spectrum, which is good for taxpayers especially, because we look for and find opportunities to save taxpayer dollars. And so we have long had a memorandum of understanding which describes that cooperation, and moving into the new building introduced some other topics that needed to be addressed in a memorandum of understanding and a good opportunity to revisit that. So we've been working on it very specifically for a number of months to make sure that we get it right, we create a bulletproof document that is happy, happily supported by the library trustees and hopefully the Select Board that addresses all of the details of importance as the library moves into the new building. You'll remember that the Select Board appointed the chairwoman on October 21st to join in those efforts to fine-tune and make sure that we had a good document that detailed the cooperation between the library and the town. And so I'm happy to present to you an M O U which was approved by the library trustees. The final draft was at their June 17th meeting, and would be looking for any proposed amendments or approval by the Select Board at tonight's meeting. One thing that I do want to point out is although we made every effort to address all of the possible areas of need or cooperation between the town and the library, there will be things that aren't addressed in the M O U. And I think it's important that we put on the record that the expectation is that anything that isn't contemplated in M O U is the responsibility of the library unless or until the M O U is updated or there's, or there is a discussion with the Select Board about addressing an unanticipated need or something that has come up since we entered this memorandum of understanding.
I think that was important to note. There may be things that have been established that we are unaware of, so yes, I would say going forward, that's important to note. Other than that, I am grateful that both groups worked so well together to finally come to an agreement.
When I was looking at who was responsible for what outdoors, what kind of siding was on the building?
I think it's vinyl siding, isn't it?
I don't think it, is it Hardy Plank? Is it?
Like, I wonder how much maintenance there is.
I can get back to you on that. I'm looking at Jim, because he probably cut through some of it. The siding?
The siding, I think it's vinyl.
It is vinyl, okay.
I'm pretty sure it was vinyl.
Yeah, because they did vinyl on the back, because they had a strip of it.
Okay.
So we would entertain either a motion for amendments or a motion to approve the updated memo of understanding.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated memorandum of understanding with the Barrington Public Library dated June 12, 2025.
Oh, seconded.
Oh, okay. Roll call vote, please.
Samaco, aye.
Mantra, aye.
Capella, aye.
Skosia.
And Hardakoff, aye. Motion carries, thank you. Up next is a discussion about the ambulance two replacement.
Not much of a discussion, just an update. I told you in, at the June meeting, when I asked you all to support waiving the purchasing policy based on the acquisition plan for ambulance two, that we'd bring you quotes and a proposal tonight's meeting. We actually think we'll do that in August. There's some other options that we're pursuing, want to make sure we get it right, and I expect it will bring something in August. Fortunately, the approach that we're looking at has a much shorter lead time than buying a new ambulance that can have 24 months or more lead time. And so we hope that when a decision is made, you know, we'll be able to have a pretty decent turnaround time on the ambulance. But now plan to see that in August, not tonight.
Thank you for the update. Any other new business?
Just something I would like to talk about in the future, given, you know, the wake of what happened in Texas, what do we have for infrastructure that's in danger of failing or anything? I think you have a research engineer.
Low hazard dam, low hazard dam. We replaced the critical piece of infrastructure downstream of that.
I know when I first came on the board, I thought, we'll get this solved. Now I realize it's really low in the priority.
Yes.
And one other thing in reference to that, do we have a way to convey without being overly involved in it, but convey to people residing in Barrington that their homeowner's insurance does not cover flood insurance? I know it varies by state, but I feel like what has occurred in Texas brings us to a position of needing to share that people are looking into that and if not covered by their homeowner's insurance.
It's a national problem.
You have a sailboat, okay?
Okay. Well, skipping the sailboat, how do we convey to residents? We, we're a water-rich community, and how do we convey to our residents that this is something they should be looking at?
Yeah, I mean, the flooded flood insurance piece in terms of, you know, public information, I mean, we can certainly make federal resources available so people can understand if they're in a designated flood zone where they're required to have, where their providers are required to provide flood insurance, or if they are not and they don't have flood insurance, that should be something they're aware of. I don't know that we have a big role outside of that unless you thought that we did. And to your question about the flood danger, so the, New Hampshire Homeland Security Emergency Management in partnership with FEMA has a fantastic hazard mitigation program. So we have an emergency management plan and hazard mitigation plan, which addresses all of our critical pieces of infrastructure, all of the real or potential threats to those pieces of critical infrastructure, what the action steps are. And so those, both of those plans are required to be updated every five years. That requirement stems down from to be eligible for FEMA funds. Some of our recent FEMA funds, we've received 90% funding for the outfall of the dam on the Lakeside Oaks culverts, the $150,000 for the communication tower generator, the $75,000, or actually ended up being $125,000 towards this building, the generator and the equipment in this room. So we have recently updated plans that kind of address that in all detail.
Do we think we have any bridges that are red-listed? Do we have any, any infrastructure that's like on a red list?
So we do have red-listed bridges. That's, that's how we've been able to get the state aid bridge funds, the 80% of funds. I haven't looked recently at the state-owned infrastructure in Barrington and the designation of those, but I can look at that. What, just to land the plane on the hazard mitigation plan, the, it's generally not advisable to make that public, because it kind of puts all in one place, all of the details on all of your critical infrastructure or important piece of a community. And so we do, we did publish a summary of kind of like, hey, this is what the, this covers, and this is what we train on and kind of prepare for. But certainly, the Select Board all got copies of it then, and I can get you a copy of it that kind of has those details. And I don't know, to your point about like, how do we communicate with the residents to let them know that, hey, we've done this planning and there is a plan, you know, we are prepared to address the threats that might face our community? I can workshop with our folks, public safety folks, to see how we might do that in a non-alarming way, but in a real way, like know that, you know, we're not, we're not just turning a blind eye to the threats that we might face.
Okay. I have 11 minutes. Go ahead, sir.
No, really, really quickly, I think our biggest threat, probably less, not that floods aren't important, but wind seems to be a bigger threat. Do we have a notification, sirens or, or a notification we have for wind events?
Yeah, so the, the state in New Hampshire, you know, being a community estate of 1.3 million dollars, the, the state invests in a lot of the resources that sometimes even towns and cities do in large areas. But the state has a program called Code Red, which is an emergency alert system that is available to municipalities for that type of messaging. We don't have sirens, right? We don't have pole-mounted sirens to announce.
That's Hebrew.
Yep. But, so that would be the, the kind of most, that would be the most involved alert system that we have. Certainly, the, you know, through dispatch, there are other notification tools, alert tools. I'm sure you've seen, you know, the amber alerts and the silver alerts, you know, those all come out of public safety as events arise. So there are other communication tools for lower-level incidents. But yeah, did you have something else in mind, or?
No, I've never gotten a silver alert here, so.
Well, you, I think you have a flip phone, so that's probably the.
My wife doesn't get neither.
That's probably the barrier.
They're just saying, hold on, in the phone settings.
Actually, that's not true, because when I go to Florida, I'm getting amber alerts on my phone.
Oh, interesting.
Every day.
Oh, that is interesting.
Well, hopefully that just means that there are a few lost children and adults in New Hampshire.
That can be what we hope, for sure. I, I think they're also using social media for a lot of the silver alerts, and I know that Stratford Dispatch is putting them out on Facebook now as well. Select Board reports.
So the zoning board met last month for just a single case, which was a family looking to, for a variance on setbacks to expand their house. And actually, it was just really nice to see, because the whole family, even though they had a representative, was there with their children. Several members of the community came out. This is a relatively new family to town, so several neighborhood members in support, and we had people online. So it was probably the most support I've ever seen in favor of an incredibly straightforward case. It was just nice to see the support they were getting.
I missed quite a few meetings here the last month, but this library board meets tomorrow, so.
Excellent.
I will return.
At the new library.
You can let them know that you will, their, their M O U is signed. Joyce?
Planning Boardings meeting once a month for the summer. The last meeting was July 1st. I wasn't there, but they had two issues. This one is a company called Weave Filtration, which had a request, they want to move into the Associated Buyers Building, which has been empty for some time, so that's a really good move for the town. So they got some conditional approval. And the other was a lot line adjustment.
Vice Chair.
Well, Connor stole the majority of my thunder, but in addition to that, summer camp is in full swing at Parks and Rec in addition. They have a fishing camp next week, and it filled up.
Oh, fun.
Almost immediately, 13 kids are going to learn how to do some fishing.
And a deep-sea fishing day?
I believe so, and.
It's exciting.
So that's all I have, otherwise it was P C D C, all the stuff we got.
There you have it. Zoning has been reported on. The Conservation Commission was canceled and rescheduled for next month, and Paul gave you an update on the very exciting Energy Committee, which is, we're gold.
One thing the Conservation, or the Energy Committee is considering, I think we may see a request at our August meeting, that Sunday, September 21st date, that is the Fall Equinox, and there's a nationwide event called Sunday, and that event is, you know, not coincidentally coincides with the Fall Equinox. But anyways, I think the Energy Committee would like to program an event, probably on the Barrington Common property on that day, you know, highlighting energy topics in the sun and, you know, whatever else. And so that may coincide nicely with other activities that we have going on for master plan implementation and the Downtowns and Trails program, so.
Sounds like a good collaboration.
I think we may see a request in August.
Good. I'm going to open up the next public comment, given as we have no one in house and one person online. I'll give it a second to see if anyone online would like to speak. And at this time, I will close public comment. We have no need for non-public session, do we?
Nope.
Move adjourn.
Second.
And I have a second. Roll call, please.
Samaco, aye.
Mantra, aye.
Capella, aye.
Skosia.
Hardakoff, aye at 7:54. Thank you, Connor McGyver.